Okay, as the mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council work session meeting to order at six P. M. First item. On September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, I received a request from councillor Mead to participate remotely in the September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow councillor Mead's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow councillor Mead to remotely participate in the September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Councillor Holmes is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will ask councillor Mead to state the remote location from which she is participating.
I'm at three, four, two Sherwood Avenue, Stanton.
Thank you. Could everyone on council as well as the audience here councillor Mead?
Yes.
All right. Thank you and welcome. All right, the next item on September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, I received a request from councillor Doll to participate remotely in the September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow councillor Doll's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow councillor Doll to remotely participate in the September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, councillor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Councillor Doll, will you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
One thousand, three East Beverly Street, Stanton, Virginia.
Thank you. Could everyone on council as well as the audience here councillor Doll?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Welcome. All right. First regular item on the work session agendas, the consideration of the work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by councillor Claffey. Do we have a second?
A second is Terry Holmes.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is an introduction of general registrar, Kristi Linos. Yeah, all righty. Ms. Boerger.
Sure, Kristi Linos is with us this evening. She's the newly appointed general registrar, and I also asked her to talk about a few important dates coming up with the November eighth election, so Ms. Linos, I'll turn it over to you. Hi, I'm sure most of you recognize me. I've been in city hall for the past fifteen years. The next election is on November eighth. The early party, early voting will start on September twenty-third, and that is here in city hall. The last day to early vote is November fourth, and the two Saturdays is October twenty-ninth and November fifth. Deadline to register to vote, October seventeenth, and to apply for an absentee ballot is October twenty-eighth.
Are there any questions? Well, welcome, and thank you so much for being willing to serve. You're very excited when we heard that you accepted the position.
Yes, I am excited. It's been good. It's been a little over a month. Lots of learning. Everything's a little rabbit hole.
It is a little rabbit hole.
But everything, I start reading one thing and then I hit something else and that's, yeah, yeah, but it's been a lot of fun and I've enjoyed it so far.
Feel good about it?
I do feel good about it. I love deadlines. I love deadlines. I love organization, so so far I feel good.
Well, again, welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, that takes us on to item three, which is roll call. We are now at a portion of the agenda called roll call. Roll call allows each council member an opportunity to bring forth matters for staff follow-up either during the same meeting or a future work session or regular meeting if additional time is required to respond to a council member requiring. All right, at this time, I'll start with councillor Holmes.
I really don't have anything to say this week.
Okay, councillor Claffey?
I did find something that struck my interest on, um, certainly don't hold you accountable for this, Leslie, but on the June tenth meeting last year in two thousand and twenty-one, we brought up a safety improvement for ten city intersections. And it was supposed to be gotten back to us as far as we were going to follow up. And I realize it's been a little over a year and we haven't heard anything as far as I know, so I just thought maybe it was time for an update.
I can certainly give you a quick update. It's actually a Zoom meeting that was supposed to happen this, uh, yesterday morning. It's been pushed off to next week with VDOT uh, to talk about HICP program, which was sort of the funding arm for some of those suggestions. Uh, so, uh, should be maybe the next meeting, uh, I can certainly present an update on where we are uh, with with those intersections. And also, we've applied for a grant to sort of a systematic citywide intersectional program. Uh, VDOT indicated that they were interested in funding programs since their projects, so they're just, and, uh, so we've applied for a sort of a wider view on pedestrian crossings. There's also an element of new VDOT paving rules uh, require that any street that's paved have fully ADA compliant uh, corners at every intersection.
So what they've been doing at, uh, Statler and, uh,
No, no, Statler Richmond is a whole nother sad, horrible story, but, uh, so, you know, I, uh, I can certainly, uh, give you an update on where we are, not just with those ten intersections, but with pedestrian safety writ large.
Can be great. Thanks.
No, okay. Okay, councillor, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, one quick follow-up on it. Uh, these, um, cutouts from the curb that go into the street that they put in on Central Avenue, how are they being received and, uh, caused any issues?
The bump outs?
Yeah.
The bump outs.
I think mixed is the word that comes to mind. Uh, a lot of people like them. Again, and it's mixed for the exact same reason, uh, they really do slow traffic down. You know, people's speed is much more a function of how s- of what the road feels like than it is the sign on the side of the road. So as the road comes in, people slow down. Um, and as the, and then as Matt Sensbaugh gets that vegetation to start taking, it's only going to get better and better. So the people who enjoy traffic going slower love it, and the people who feel like the road's job is to get me from point A to point B as quickly as possible, not so much. I will say that in the first couple of months after they put in, we were raking out tire tracks in them all the time, and that seems to have resolved itself.
Has there been any accidents at all? People actually running into it or?
None, 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 none.
Okay.
Now.
Has a lot of traffic. I mean, I've seen people hauling blood on that street.
No, they do, and that's, uh, I will say that, um, one of my concerns is, uh, in six or seven inches of snow, are my guys with the plows going to be able to see those? So we may actually, when winter time rolls around, we may be putting some reflectors in them, just so give us some sense because uh, I know who will lose that battle between the concrete curb and the plow, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Glad you were here.
What about on Beverly Street? I saw that they had planned a few of those on Main Street, and I'm aware now on, uh, after a weekend when you have, you know, the trash trucks trying to get down Beverly Street, the beer trucks trying to get the bars and restaurants restocked. I mean, I'm, I'm aware that uh, Main Street gets rather crowded here on Mondays and Tuesdays, and are these bump outs gonna?
Uh, that, thanks. That's probably something I should probably wait and I can discuss in a little more detail when I, because there's a lot of ideas for what to do on Beverly Street. When it comes to loading, unloading, traffic calming pedestrians.
That's the time they pull up on the side streets, like they'll pull up on New Street or?
Some will and some won't, and, uh, you know, that's, I, I, that's one of the things that the VDOT study looked at is, you know, as far as through traffic, going from, you know, Lewis to, to Coulter down Beverly, there's not a lot, but, uh, you know, the delivery traffic can certainly chop that up and, yeah. I need to pull this all together. I'll, I'll cover that in more detail.
All right, thank you, thank you. That's all.
Councillor Mead?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councillor Doll?
Nothing.
I was going to say, uh, with the other one last one that we had, it went really smooth. I think a lot of places order early in the week and make sure they have stuff there so they're having to have deliveries later, later in the weekends, because I didn't hear any complaints about that from the restaurant.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell me, and I probably should know the answer. What are, what actually is going on at Richmond and Statler?
All right, so, um, I am going to be judicious in my words, because that is a VDOT project. And I would not want someone sitting in a VDOT staff meeting to give a book report on one of my projects, so, uh, there is a problem with the foundations for the new signals. You know, right now, we've got the hanging signals and we're going to the, to the solid mast arms, which is a much better solution. But the foundations that, that were poured were not exactly right. And now VDOT, the contractor, are trying to sort out what to do. Now, this is not just a case of, of, uh, you know, me enjoying my popcorn on the sideline watching someone else work, because at the end of this project, we will inherit those signals. So I am, you know, I do have a vested interest in making sure that what is installed is installed correctly and will not turn into a maintenance burden, so we are waiting to see what decisions they come up with. Again, VDOT is, VDOT, if, if anything, they're, they're certainly not known for cutting corners, so I don't think they're going to.
What is the reasoning for taking away or demolishing about twelve, fifteen foot of concrete? You know, at the end, they just kind of get away with it and they shorten it.
Well, when the project's all said and done, there'll be two turn lanes going left off of southbound Statler onto, and we needed, needed that extra space to get the radius to get those lanes. The idea is, is to stop that sort of morning lunchtime, evening time backup, uh, all the way up Statler, uh, over the bridge. Again, none of that really can happen until the, we get the new signals in. And the new signals aren't going to happen until something is, uh, something is, is resolved. It is, it's, it's frustrating. The project was supposed, the ribbon was supposed to be cut in June on this project.
And they weren't working on it all night long. I've, I've come by there when they were digging it out and they were there late at night.
Oh, they, and, and.
Did they pour the wrong, the wrong kind of concrete?
And hugely, to make it hugely oversimplified, the bolts sticking out of the concrete and the holes in the plate of the posts don't line up. So that, uh, and, uh, it's super expensive to redo the foundations and it's super dangerous to tink to, uh, tinker structurally with the mass that's holding up the signals. So it is very literally a rock and a hard place.
Hey. Does it mean dark?
I ended up being not nearly as judicious as I had planned.
I don't have a.
All right, thank you. All right, I do not have any questions as well, so that takes us on to item four. I'll send the motion to go into closed meeting for discussion of prospective city manager candidates.
I move to con- enter a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three, seven, eleven, eight dash, uh, eight, one for discussions considering, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment as the city manager of Stanton, Virginia.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second. That's the easy part.
All right, Vice Mayor Robertson is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead. Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now in closed session. Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed session and back into open session.
Madam, oh, you got it?
No, you go ahead. What does it matter?
Madam Mayor, I move the council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Right, councillor Claffey is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
But did, did Brenda not on there?
Brenda?
We need to get her there.
She might, she might be on the other.
And she might have switched over on the other. Mr. Kessinger? Majority vote?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
With that, we're in open session. This concludes the work session for the Stanton City Council. We'll come back at seven thirty for the regular meeting for the Stanton City Council.
Let me speak to the flag. The United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that takes us on to the invocation moment of silence, and tonight is councillor Holmes' turn.
Uh, tonight, I invited, uh, the Stanton rabbi to come in and do an invocation. Her name is Randy Nagel, and if y'all would, I would, I would really like the, uh, for this to happen, so it's going to be great.
Welcome.
You're a good.
Perfect, perfect.
Well, it's really my honor to be here and to, um, have the privilege of giving the invocation at tonight's meeting. Rebono shell alum, creator of the universe and God of us all. We implore you this day to extend your loving kindness to the city, city of Stanton, the citizens and all who work with them and on their behalf. Help this council to realize their potential so they may respond with initiative and resourcefulness to the trust that has been bestowed to them. Cause them to remember that by working for this city and by serving its inhabitants, they are ultimately working for you, oh God, as we strive to build and sustain our imperfect world. Make them conscious of their responsibility as leaders of this city so that by the examples they set and the policies they adopt, they embody the best qualities of all of us. Grant them the wisdom to learn from past mistakes, the courage to think new thoughts, and the ability to discern innovative ideas. May we listen to one another with respect, judge each other with charity, and may any controversy only be for the sake of the good of this city. God bless this vibrant and diverse city founded on the freedom of religion and creed. May we always be a place of freedom that supports all people to believe and pray and a manner that is comfortable for them. May Stanton be known as a growing, livable, and welcoming city that is working hard to better itself, building upon its great past and looking toward an even greater future. Let us be perceived as a city of vision, a place of growth, a harbor for freedom, creativity, and imagination. We pray, oh God, that with your help and the leadership of these men and women, it may be so. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I will recognize John Blair.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks, and apologies, this is not on the formal agenda, but, uh, councillor Mead, are you with us?
She's.
I am. Sorry.
No problem. Um, it just, the Freedom of Information Act has a certification vote at the, uh, after a closed meeting, and uh, the clerk, uh, informed me that there was a, I guess, a technical mishap and you were not able to participate in that certification, so again, to comply with FOIA, um, would you mind stating for the record your vote on, on certifying that, uh, the closed meeting adhered to the topics that were described in the motion?
I certify that.
Okay. And apologies for that, uh, interlude from the agenda, but.
You're keeping us all legal, so thank you. All right, that takes us on to the mayor's report. We have a couple of proclamations, and the first one is for Constitution Week. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation, Constitution Week, September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two marks the two hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the ensuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by Stanton City Council that September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two is hereby designated as Constitution Week. In the city of Stanton and all the citizens of Stanton are asked to reaffirm the ideals established by the framers of the Constitution in seventeen eighty-seven, adopted this eighth day of September, two thousand and twenty-two, Andrea W. Oaks, Mayor. And if you would like to join me at the podium, we have some, um, much nicer copies of the proclamation for you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Hensley, and I'm the regent of the Beverly Manor Daughters of the American Revolution, and we're one of the three or four oldest, uh, DAR chapters in the state of Virginia. Uh, it's an honor for me to be here to receive the proclamations, and we appreciate the fact that you are, uh, taking time to support the Constitution. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, um, our next proclamation, again, a very important proclamation. And I have to say, uh, before I read this, I received, um, an email notice, a friend of, um, my family, their child died this morning from pediatric cancer, so, um, this is, this is real. This is a real, serious issue. Not only in Stanton, but Virginia and throughout the country. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation, childhood cancer awareness month, September, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas each year, more than fifteen thousand children and adolescents under the age of nineteen in the United States and more than four hundred thousand children globally are diagnosed with cancer. And whereas every year, more than one thousand, seven hundred children under the age of nineteen in the United States lose their lives to cancer. And whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease past infancy for children under the age of fourteen in the United States. And whereas the five-year survival rate for children with cancer has increased from fifty-eight percent in the mid nineteen seventies to more than eighty percent of U.S. childhood cancer patients becoming long-term survivors presently. And whereas in two thousand and twelve, President Obama proclaimed September is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to bring awareness to pediatric cancer. And whereas the color gold and the gold ribbon are symbols of support for child, for children affected with cancer. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by Stanton City Council that September twentieth, twenty-two is hereby designated as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Stanton and is a time of year when our community and other organizations honor children and survivors affected by pediatric cancer in order to raise awareness and help continue the research and treatment of this disease. Adopted this eighth day of September, two thousand and twenty-two, Andrea W. Oaks, Mayor. I'm sorry if it seemed a little emotional, but this is, this is one disease. I mean, I understand, we live in an imperfect world. And there's free will and things happen, but this is one disease I will never be able to comprehend or understand. So whatever we can do to annihilate childhood cancer, um, let's do it. Let's support anything and everything when it comes to, um, uncovering a cure for childhood cancer. With that, I will ask the Chire family if they can come to the podium. I'd like to present you with the former, the formal proclamation.
As we do that, uh, I'm going to give the Stanton City Council a beautiful up and wear for the rest of the September month to represent childhood cancer awareness month. Some of you may have seen that Stan Fire Department and a fine representative of our police department jumped on board and they all have ribbons, and she is rocking her ribbon this evening, uh, for the month, so it's just a blessing to see how our community is. Actually, so I have an extended family.
How you doing, okay? Good to see you. You're looking good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Andrea asked me to share the story real quick. So 2000, 2014, my nephew turned two years old, and I'm gonna try to speak swiftly, because I know there's an agenda. It was a Saturday, played like any other two-year-old. Then 24 hours later, he didn't want to walk, screamed to the top of his lungs about his legs. Two days later, found out it was leukemia, didn't know the magnitude of it. Wednesday, we found out it was one of the rarest forms of AML leukemia, M7. So, of course, it drastically changed everything from then on out. The next day, he started his first round of chemo, and it was Christmas morning. So, every year since then, excuse my French, but Christmas week is almost like Hail Week. And we do it, of course, for our family, and I have an eight-year-old now. But seeing what he went through and being in three different hospitals, it was a very humbling experience, especially when you go to a hospital like Cincinnati Children's Hospital or St. Jude's, where you walk down the sidewalk and every placard, every brick is in memory of or in honor of a child. So that changed the dynamic. Then it really hit, and for me and my family was, my brother called me from Cincinnati Children's Hospital, and I don't even think my family knows this. He said, "Man, I keep walking by this room, and there's a little boy in there, and I haven't seen any adult but the staff and the nurses." So he called, he was crying, and I was like, he and I got a crazy relationship, said, "Do what you gotta do." And I already knew what he was gonna do. He was gonna go into the isolation room with this kid with no authority, and he did so. The little boy looked up and said, "Are you my dad?" So he called me right after, heartbroken, and then that's when I was like, we have a big, tight-knit family, a big, tight-knit community that we come together for anything. I'd be a hypocrite, and I think we'd be a hypocrite if we didn't extend it to other families. So that's when we went basically hand to the pavement and developed the foundation. And we kind of weave, bob and weave through things, because there's a bunch of organizations that, as we know of, and they all have their own niches. So we didn't want to step on anybody's toes. So we kind of fill in the gaps. Tomorrow, actually, I'm about to leave and get ready. We have in our Seventh Annual Golf Tournament, and all the proceeds go back to UVA Children's Hospital. And a great relationship with them, since we've been in somewhat cahoots of, I dictate where the monies go in UVA Children's Hospital now. As of last year, I was selected now to be on the UVA Children's Hospital's Advisory Board. So when I meet Jennifer and Laney and so many other individuals, I can tell them, we're doing the right thing. We know exactly where the money's going. We do toy drives and everything. So that's the inspiration of, I am a healthy 44-year-old as of September 1st, which is another game changer. September 1st now for the rest of my life is the kickoff for this deadly disease. And it's such a bittersweet thing that I have to deal with for the rest of my life, and I have dealt with for the last six years. But it is something where God gave me this ability. I don't know why he gave it to me, but I'm not gonna question it. And you see how our family supports, and we come together for any child like it's our own. So if you ever needed to, as you were speaking earlier, as soon as you said it, I still got chills. Because it is the deadliest, and a child can't tell you what's going on. That's, that's, I think, the most heartfelt point of all of this. As I seen, like, my brother and his fiancee go through, was like, what is going on, and how can we help you? And then when you get, it's almost like a chop to the throat, a chop to the stomach, all at the same time, when you hear those words, your child has cancer. So it is my God-given ability or fight to pass that on. My nephew brought so many people together, and I promised him, I'm not gonna let his legacy die. And that's, that's why I'm here.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate everything that the Keier family has done for this community to bring awareness to this horrific disease. And we, we appreciate the support that you've given to the community, and we want to continue to support the Keier family, because I'm sure it still seems like yesterday. So, God bless you all. And Kylie, if you'll hand out the gold ribbons. Now, Ms. Bowery Guard. We have one week in September in which the Keier family.
Was it next week?
He's putting the ribbons.
Because I didn't want to destroy any trees.
Oh, no.
Specs and such, but whatever, whatever works, we'll do it.
Just let it, I think you just need to let us know when you would like to do it, and then you have kind of the parameters of when that, you know, where the trees are. And so just, just stay in touch with us and just let us know. And I thought in your last email, it was next week, the 11th. So, which is a Sunday, I think. So, yeah, they're shaking their head, too. They remember that as well, so.
So what we're talking about, did you want to explain? So along Stettler Boulevard, for one week in September, you will see gold ribbons placed around the trees. And that is to honor childhood cancer awareness and to honor and remember our children that have passed because of this dreadful disease and the families that are left with the, the memory of having to watch their children go through this awful, awful disease. But again, God bless you all.
Thank you all for letting us, thank you, Mr. Blair, for all the emails. Go out, get your gold lights, we got many days left in September. Represent.
Okay, the next item under the mayor's report. I don't know if everyone's received their 50th anniversary Stanton Parks and Recreation Activity Guide in the mail yet. If you have not, it should be forthcoming. We have plenty down here at City Hall. But there's a lot of fun activities throughout the fall and on into the winter. So, take a look at it, I think you'll enjoy reading it. With that, I'll move on to additional items by members of council.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Claffey.
I brought mine, because I was gonna talk about.
Go right ahead.
There's the Veterans Fishing Derby was mentioned, and my buddy Frank Darkus grabbed me at the park the other day and said, "You gotta get the word out." And we have several of the fraternal organizations here in the Stanton are taking up a collection to purchase a bunch of fish that they're gonna have available for the Veterans Fishing Derby on Saturday, October 8th. And the reason I'm giving this announcement ahead of time is that everybody can get their fishing license and take advantage of this, because children under age 15, when they have the kids' version of this in May, do not need a fishing license. But when you go to the veterans, you need the fishing license. So that's why Frank Darkus got me to make the public service announcement and do it. The other interesting thing that I saw in this book when I was, when I opened it up today. On Saturday, October 29th, we're going to have the First Annual Pumpkin Float on Lake Tams as well. And for $2, you get a raft, you can do whatever design you want on your pumpkin, and we're gonna float them across Lake Tams. So that sounds like a pretty cool event. I hope a lot of people come out and support that. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any additional items by members of council? Right, with that.
This is Carolyn Dole. Just, I just thought we could take maybe a moment of silence for the passing of Queen Elizabeth today. She was a leader with integrity and certainly the longest, the longest term of being queen. And I think we could honor her with just a moment of silence.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. With that.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting of August 25th, 2022, as print.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
All right, we have a second by Counselor Amy Darby. Any further discussion?
This is Brenda Mead, I need to make an amendment to the works, the work session minutes.
Okay.
So I'll move to make an amendment to the minutes of the work session. In lines 113 to 131, a discussion of amendments to Stanton City Code regulations. I'd like to add a statement that Ms. Mead and Mr. Robertson both asked that Mr. Weller clarify that the recommended changes would increase public safety.
Okay. Counselor Mead, can you confirm the number of the lines again, please?
Well, it can be inserted pretty, pretty much anywhere. It could be between lines, well, right at line 128, for instance.
Okay.
Of the work session minutes. And the, and the sentence is, Ms. Mead and Mr. Robertson both asked that Mr. Weller clarify that the recommended changes would increase public safety.
Okay, all right. So there's an amended motion on the floor. Mr. Blair, you look like you want to say something.
That's an amendment.
Yes.
Is there a second to Ms. Mead's amendment?
Which I was getting ready to say. No, no, that's good. You're keeping us legal.
I second Terry Holmes.
All right. Counselor Holmes. Were you in attendance?
I don't think he was there.
You were, you weren't, you were not in attendance, so.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Mead, and a second by Counselor Dole to amend the original motion. Any further discussion?
I was gonna say that I was evidence for a family emergency.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. All right, Mr. Kessiker, can you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
I was absent.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And the other motion can simply die, since that overruled.
Well, no, that was the amendment, now we need the.
Yeah, you want the, oh, I knew it.
To approve the amended.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion.
We already, we already have that, all right.
Wait, let's just do it again.
Yes, let's do it again, we already have it, but do it again.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the August 25th, 2022 work session and regular meeting as amended.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Counselor Mead is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
I was absent.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes us on to the regular meeting, which is Item A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Network Towers for a special use permit for 306 New Hope Road under the provisions of SCC 18.185, telecommunications facilities of Title 18, zoning of the Stanton City Code. Ms. Bowery Guard.
Mr. Rodney Rose, Senior Planner, will walk through this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Network Towers requests a special use permit to construct a new 199-foot monopole telecommunications tower and equipment compound at 306 New Hope Road. This would be on the back of the property. The property is Zone I2 Heavy Industrial District, and a special use permit is required for the construction of any communications tower in any district. Staff has conducted a review of the request and has found no issues. Telecommunication facilities are regulated through Chapter 18.185 of the zoning code. And the applicant has completed a comprehensive review of the zoning code's chapter requirements in their application. They basically went through that chapter of the zoning code and checked all the boxes. They stated how they would meet all the requirements. It simplified staff's review of the application and plan commission's review of it also. So, the proposal is consistent with the zoning ordinance's goal of encouraging the placement of telecommunications facilities in non-residential areas and in areas where the adverse impacts of the city are minimal. The Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on August 18th, 2022. During the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request. On a four-to-zero vote, with one member abstaining, the commission voted to recommend approval of the special use permit with the following conditions. That screening shall meet the requirements of Chapter 18.185. Screening shall be accomplished either by new plannings or through the preservation of existing plannings. And two, development of the site shall be in general conformance with the plan submitted in the application, and the tower shall not exceed 199 feet in height. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after the public hearing.
Are there any questions? Is there a representative from?
Yes, there is. I believe Ryan Fletcher from Network Towers is here. I believe he does have a brief presentation for council.
If he would like to go ahead and come to the podium, the council might have a few questions for you.
Mayor Oaks, council members, good evening. I'm actually Drew Patterson, I'm the Director of Network Towers. Ryan is my land use manager. You have a full agenda, I'll make this quick. I do have a presentation. This application's before you, because T-Mobile has a need to maintain and improve coverage in this area. I say maintain, because as some of you may have noticed over the years, there are antennas on top of the Valley Feed silos right there. Those are Shentel antennas. Shentel is affiliated with Sprint, Sprint merged with T-Mobile. Now it's all T-Mobile. T-Mobile wanted to improve coverage in that area, so they looked at that Valley Feed site. And structurally, that site won't, won't structurally support the antennas and the equipment that they now need to put up there. So that is the premise of this site, is maintaining what's there. I'm sorry. Here's the location, right off of, it's on New Hope and Commerce Road. We did locate the site to be as discreet as possible. We found an industrial zone property where we could put this. T-Mobile did look at some of the transmission towers in the area prior to pursuing this site. The transmission towers will not structurally support, either will not structurally support or to lower an elevation to achieve the needed coverage objective. This will continue to serve the surrounding area. We did provide propagation maps provided by T-Mobile. You could see the proposed site with the red star. This is without the proposed tower. As you fill it in, you'll see moving north on 11, it covers that area. But it also covers Jefferson Highway to the east. But it basically fills in nicely the surrounding towers so that you have seamless coverage between all of the existing towers. I will note, we're proposing a 199-foot tower. The site to the west, the Jefferson Street site, is 250 foot higher in elevation than our proposed site. And that is why we need the, the tower height that we're requesting. We are locating 500 foot from New Hope Road and 550 foot from the closest off-site structure. We're 50 foot from Commerce Road. We did try to locate it within the tree line as much as possible so we could screen it from adjacent properties and roadways. We did photo sims for this. I'll breeze through these. By and large, what the photo sims show is that the tower will have limited visibility from surrounding roads and properties. You could see the, the red arrow. This is different vantage points. But I'll just say that, again, it's, it's limited visibility by and large. This is from the west. is from the west. You could see the elevation difference and, and how you're looking down the hill here. Again, you'll, you'll see Valley Feed there and then the tower in the background. That is about as quick as I can make it. Uh, but I will say, uh, we, we ask that uh, council consider this application. Staff has recommended approval. The planning commission has recommended approval, and we ask that uh, council recommend its approval as well. I'm here to answer questions, um, if you may have any.
Right, are there any questions? Vice Mayor Robertson?
You made the statement twice that, that it would, the, the existing site wouldn't structurally support is because the tower is that much bigger, more heavy, what, I mean, what that means?
Uh, yes, that's a good question. So structurally, uh, the antennas that were used in the past, um, T-Mobile, uh, when they upgrade, the equipment for wireless is surprisingly, it's getting larger. It's not getting smaller. Um, antennas, 4G, 5G antennas, whatever you may use, they're, they tend to be larger. They're eight foot, a lot of them. They have to put radio heads behind them to improve coverage. And because of all that equipment, uh, the, the, the Valley Feed site just isn't structurally capable of handling what they want to put on it. They did run a structural analysis and it, and it failed pretty, pretty bad.
Councillor Holmes?
Would you uh, lease out any of those, uh, the tower to other companies?
Yes, also, great question. So we're building this tower at 199 foot. Uh, and what that'll allow us to do, T-Mobile will have the top slot at about uh, 190 center line is where they will be. But every 10 foot, we can put another carrier. So this tower's tall enough to accommodate T-Mobile, but it's also to, tall enough to accommodate Verizon or AT&amp;T or Dish, which is now the, the fourth largest carrier, absolutely. And we will be designing it structurally um, so that it can hold up to four carriers.
Any additional questions or comments?
Carolyn Dole. My, my question, uh, is just to clarify, you said T-Mobile would be at the top of that pole?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cuz, cuz I have T-Mobile. I want it to be as good a coverage as possible.
You will get the best service uh, out of all of the carriers, yes.
I'm also a neighbor and uh, it's real close to where I live too, so maybe I'll be switching to T-Mobile.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. Um, I will read the statement that our city attorney has me read. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during this council's meetings for other public hearings and matters of the public, and please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing, so if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we'll alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. So again, as soon as I bang the gavel that'll open up the public hearing, you can speak for or against this particular um, subject matter, and we'll start with the audience and then we'll alternate between Zoom and the audience. And then when I bang the gavel, that'll close the public hearing out. So the public hearing is now open. Would anyone care to address the council? Come on up, Mr. Fossa. You had your hand raised.
I hear it in your chest.
Oh, perfect.
Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. It's like me. Sometimes I work.
You're doing great.
Unfortunately, I have a tongue, and unfortunately, I like to speak. Okay? I, I have no objections to these towers that are going up all over the place. However, I would like to know how far away from Lewis Creek is the tower going to be? Because Lewis Creek, one of these days, is gonna have to be opened up for flood. Repair. Because when Lewis Creek, the way it is now, it doesn't help flooding at all. It needs to be opened up. And if this tower is very close to Lewis Creek, then there's going to be a problem. Not only that, how many other towers will there be placed alongside of this one? These are questions that I don't know. Okay? So you have to make these decisions. I can't make them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kessiker, do we have anyone with their hand raised in Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Right, would anyone else from the audience care to address the um, city council concerning the subject matter? Right, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks?
Councillor Holmes?
I move the council adopt the resolution and approve the special use permit with the conditions and recommend, and recommended by the planning commission.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Councillor Steve Claffey is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, this is Brenda Mead. I didn't unmute myself fast enough.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say something. I guess it's by way of being kind of a public service announcement uh, for the folks who are listening to city council meeting. We do a lot of these public hearings, and um, the folks who've come before as applicants, uh, we accept mu- much of what they say in good faith. Um, and, but we also, uh, when our, our planning commission believes that certain contingencies needed to be added, that they're placed um, on the special use permit in writing. Um, because uh, because there, there are times when an applicant will come before city council with a request, and uh, and that request is granted based on statements that they make, uh, guaranteeing certain things. Uh, and then, and then they don't live up to those things. So that's why we put these things in writing, and uh, and that's why uh, it's important that you all know that the, the applicants don't swear to tell the truth when they come before city council or the planning commission. Um, and then, and that's why we put things in writing. So I just wanted to add that.
Great, thank you. Any additional comments? Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So the next item, it's another public hearing. Um, item B, public hearing in consideration of an amendment to section 18.120.0103 of Chapter 18.120, yard building setback and open space exceptions to increase the height limitations for fences and walls located in a front yard. Ms. Bow regard.
Mr. Rodney Rose will also walk through this.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And to summarize what you just stated, um, short and sweet, this is a zoning text amendment to raise the, the maximum height of a fence in a front yard from three and a half feet to four feet. Um, currently, we only allow three and a hun- three and a half feet in a front yard. Um, and in some cases, um, ordering a, a fence that's only 42 inches tall is more expensive than ordering a fence, say, that's 48 inches tall because it's has, it's a non-standard size, has to be custom-made, whatnot. Um, also, a, a 42-inch fence doesn't provide uh, much of a barrier for pets, and also doesn't meet the minimum enclosure requirements uh, for a pool as prescribed by the Virginia Statewide Building Code, which requires four foot. Normally, there are some exceptions, you know, to, to rules, but normally we don't allow pools in a front yard. However, in some cases, you will have a, you know, a 42-inch fence in the front yard to meet the current requirement, and then further back on the property, you'd have to build a separate fence, you know, in order to meet building code. So if this amendment was adopted, you would eliminate that scenario. Um, this is coming before you now because we had a citizen um, early in the summer, um, come to us and wanted, has a rather large city lot. Uh, I think it may be close to two acres, um, with a very large front yard and wanted to utilize that uh, in order to keep his dogs in the front yard. Um, and asked the city, consider um, our, our, our ordinance and possibly amending it. Um, because this is something that's been on my mind since day one when I came here. Um, when I first read the zoning ordinance, I said, that seems rather low, a 42-inch fence. Um, but for obvious reasons, uh, my first few years here, I did not touch anything regarding a fence or a wall. Um, um, but we told the, the applicant that we would um, come up with some amendments, take him to the planning commission, and not require him to, to walk it through the process. Um, in the briefing, um, you'll notice that um, staff did a review of several other cities in the Shenandoah Valley, and the Stanton zoning code in, in this regard is the most restrictive. And the plant commission discussed this at length. Um, discussed this at June, July, and August meetings, and also did a field trip to look at fences of various heights. Um, we gave them several different options, including a different uh, height limit if it's an open fence, you know, that you could see through, or if it's a, you know, brick or stone wall, a lower height. If it's set back farther on the property, maybe allowing a taller fence in the front yard. Um, but the plant commission settled on a four-foot in the front yard, um, with an exception to, for posts and for ornamental caps could be an additional six inches, and also provide the zoning administrator some flexibility if it's the irregular lot line uh, with some dips in it so that you can maintain um, that same hor- horizontal line, but in some areas it would be slightly more than four feet um, tall. But overall would be four feet from, you know, each end and most of it. Um, the plant commission conducted a public hearing on August 18th, 2022. Uh, during the public hearing, one person, uh, the person that requested that the city review this um, spoke requesting that um, the city consider a four and one-half, one-half foot height limit, or um, to allow fences um, that you could see through to be, to exceed that four foot limit. Uh, we also had a member of the public um, speak, and um, I noted the commission needs to be careful to not create tall barriers in front yards. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, on a five to zero vote, the commission voted unanimously recommend approval of amendment with the four-foot height limit. I would note that when, when we went out and looking at fences on our field trip, we saw an abundance of fences that were either chain link or picket fences that are four foot tall. And a lot of those are just, are legally non-conforming, a lot of them, because years ago, prior to 2007, that was permitted. Um, so if this amendment was adopted as drafted, you would be bringing probably hundreds of fences into compliance with the zoning code. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
Are there any questions?
I have a question. This is Brenda Mead. Couple of questions. Uh, Mr. Rhodes, uh, we still have ordinances uh, uh, regarding the sizes of, or the heights of fences and walls at corners, intersections, and will this be impacted?
Uh, you're absolutely correct. Um, we call that um, site triangles, where you cannot have any obstruction in a site triangle um, between two feet and eight feet in height. So this would not um, be able, you would not be able to build a four-foot fence into a corner, uh, into a site triangle, just as you cannot build a three and a half foot fence in the site triangle now. So it would have no impact on that.
Okay, and then um, how, how is it that you, I mean, you, you just said that there are literally hundreds of four-foot fences already out there that will come into compliance as a result of this. How, how do you monitor? Uh, how do you know if, if somebody puts up a four and a half foot fence or a five-foot fence?
Um, we do not know. Um, currently, there are no permits required for a fence. Um, similar to if you want to buy, build a, a secondary structure that's under 256 square feet, you don't even need a building permit for that, but you still have to meet the city code requirements. So we tell people, you want to put up a fence, you know, it can go up to the property line, but you're only allowed four feet in the front, eight feet in the side and rear. Um, it's pretty standard. Um, that's one thing I did mention to the commission that we wanted to keep this as simple as possible because we did not want to change that. We did not want to burden the citizens with having to get a permit. And we wanted to be able to explain over the phone what they're allowed to do.
And uh, and so it, it, this is one of those things uh, where if, where you would only uh, cite someone for building a fence too high if a neighbor complained, or if someone in, if some other uh, citizen complained about it?
Um, that's correct. We work, work on a complaint basis, although I believe a lot of those four-foot fences that we saw um, are, would we consult, consider legally non-conforming, and that they were constructed decades ago when we did not have this restriction.
Right, but go, on a go-forward basis, uh, it would be, it would have to be a complaint from a citizen that would result in uh, in a um, in, in, for instance, uh, a requirement that a citizen actually remove a fence or wall that was over four feet tall. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
The previous uh, fences that you speak of were grandfathered in, uh, because um, they were built prior to 2007?
I believe it's 2007 when the ordinance was amended. That is correct.
And this is for the front of the property?
For the front of the property.
Sides and the back are different?
It, it is, um, but I would like to point out that we consider the front yard everything between the front face of the house and the streets. So even though it may be going down the side of your property, if it's in, if it's in front of your house, that's considered a front yard and must meet currently three and a half foot height limit. And then once you get to the, the face of your house, you can go up to eight feet down the rest of the sides and in the back.
Uh, Mr. Rhodes, just to clarify that, if a house is on a corner, does the requirement, uh, is the requirement four feet along any part of the house that faces the street?
Um, yeah, we have um, uh, situations where you have a corner lot or a through lot. And in those cases, uh, they must meet the, the, the front yard, they're considered, you know, they're still front yards, maybe um, secondary front yards, but they consider, still consider front yards. So they would still have to meet um, currently that three and a half foot limit. Um, we do have an exception in the ordinance now that says if on a, like a corner side yard, on the secondary uh, frontage, if you move the fence back one half of the setback distance for the dwelling, then you can build up to eight feet. So in most residential districts, that's a 20, with a 25-foot um, setback, if you set your fence back 12 and a half feet, then you could go up higher. But that's only on corner lots, and that seems to be a waste of a lot of property, a lot of real estate.
Thank you.
This is Carolyn Dole. Um, with the uh, the zoning administrator has a discretion to approve minor increases in height to, to have that consistent horizontal line. Um, what would you say would be uh, an amount that the zoning administrator would want to not exceed? You know, there's nothing, it just is, it's kind of, you know, um.
Yeah.
And I just was curious, what, at what point would you be like, nah, I don't think that's, that'll work?
Well, that would be on a case-by-case basis, um, depending on the topography of the property. Uh, and of course, now, um, you measure um, from the finished grade on the outside of a fence or wall to get your maximum height. They could go in there and regrade it to get a more uniform line, but that also seems like a unnecessary expense. So if you have some, you know, some dips in the, in the property, uh, we would allow you to go lower. Um, and then therefore, obviously, your fence is taller than, you know, that four foot in those cases. Um, if I was to say, uh, put a figure on it, I'd say it need to be under 25% uh, of the, the fence. Um, could exceed that, say, four-foot limit.
So you're saying about a foot?
No, I'm saying no more than 25% of the length of the fence could exceed that, that four-foot height.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And that's just some, off the top of my head, I think it would need to be less than that.
I just wondered if we'd end up with some really bizarre looking fence where there was like a, you know, a ten foot drop. And so you'd have these really long boards in there and to make it even. I mean, is there some level where you just, you, you know, it, it just wouldn't make sense for them to do that?
Absolutely, there would be, and that's why we would leave it up to the zoning administrator to make that determination. So it wouldn't be a blanket. Yes, you get this exception. It would be on a case-by-case. So it would be a judgment call by the zoning administrator.
Okay, so we have to make sure we've got a, a really good zoning administrator, right?
Mr. Rhodes, you had mentioned that Stanton has been the most restrictive and that the surrounding areas were reviewed for their maximum amount. Can you list the areas, the localities, the municipalities that were reviewed and what their maximum amount is allowed?
I'd be glad to mention that for the record. And we just looked at other cities because counties are a little bit different. You know, they're more, obviously, they're rule in nature and, you know, they, they allow by and large much taller fences, you know, than, than any city would. But Wayne'sboro has a four foot maximum, Harrisonburg has a six foot maximum. I was a little surprised. Lexington has a seven foot maximum. Winchester has a four foot maximum, but must have, the fence must have twenty-five percent of it must have openings. So if it was a picket fence, you know, a fourth of it would have to be open. And then also they have, they increase it to five feet once you get back to that setback line. So for us, it'd be, you know, twenty-five feet back, then you could start going, going taller.
Thank you. Counselor Holmes?
What about neighborhoods where the, the foundation is built up? Like when you go down Beverly Street, East Beverly, you know, a lot of those, you have to go up like four or five steps. Would they be allowed to put a fence in?
Yes, it already in the ordinance is provisioned for retaining walls. And if the slope is greater than fifteen percent, you could put a fence starting at that retaining wall.
And with, and then, and depending on the neighborhood, it would depend on what kind of fence you could put in.
Absolutely. If it's in a historic district, it's going to have to follow the historic district guidelines.
Great, thank you. So we will have a public hearing, the same thing. I'll bang the gavel. Feel free to come to the podium and speak, and we'll alternate between the audience and Zoom. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone care to address the counsel for or against this issue? Hey, welcome.
Good evening, councilors, attendees. My name is John Baber. I'm, I'm, I live at twelve Oak and Wald in the city of Stanton. And I'm the one that asked that this be brought forward, went to zoning originally. I, my wife and I recently moved to Stanton. We worked in Stanton for a couple of years and fell in love with this town. It was very friendly. It was sophisticated. It is quiet. It is neighborly, is all the reasons why we wanted to live here. And so we picked up our life and moved it over here. I don't want a fence getting in the way of any of that. Good fences make good neighbors, not fences make good neighbors, but good fences make good neighbors. What doesn't make good neighbors is my two dogs out in somebody else's yard. I, I have two lovable dogs from the SPCA. You get them kind of halfway broken. One's named Jackson, the other one's Pelican. Pelican's pretty cool and a little dumb. Jackson will jump a three and a half foot fence in a second. In my couple of years working as a assistant commonwealth attorney with the city of Stanton, I've dealt with many animal nuisance cases. Many of them have to do with escaped animals. I think even Officer Parity has probably gathered at least a couple of animals during her shifts. Am I correct? So that was just fortuitous she was in here. I asked for a higher front yard fence so that I could utilize my entire yard for the dogs. I'll build the fence myself. I submitted a photograph, I think you all might have a copy of, with my smiling mug. I'll show it here to, it's me in front of a fence that I built in Charlottesville. It's a nice looking fence, and it shows it hitting about chest high. That's four and a half feet. It shows me, you can see every good part of me and, because it's see-through, some of the bad parts. But it in no way obstructs the view and the neighborly connection. And I would think, I, I, you know, I've not researched the legislative history, but that's a lot of what the Stanton fence ordinance was meant to do is kind of keep the neighborly vibe that made me want to move to Stanton. It makes you folks want to be on the council. I don't want to ruin that. But I bought a giant property and with a three and a half foot fence, I don't know what I'm going to do. They're not going, the dogs aren't going to stay in the yard. And Jackson's like immune to an electric collar. Like it's, it doesn't bother him. He's like a superhero. So a, building a fence of a four and, I asked for four and a half feet would be more than enough. I think four feet will do it, but I think is what has Officer Parity gathering my dog a month from now. And me having to explain to my boss why my dog's on the docket, you know. Planning Commission went with four feet. Planning Commission decided four feet in a closed meeting and wasn't interested in hearing about four and a half feet. Said, no, we already decided. That's it, which is kind of a funny nuance of work meetings. It like, it'd all been decided before anyone got to say anything. I'm asking the city council who makes the decisions for four and a half feet. Now, I know one of the main issues Planning Commission kept talking about was the weight, the burden that we put on zoning. I've talked with the zoning department. Four and a half foot fence is putting the additional weight than a four foot fence does. I know it's six inches. Six inches means a lot to me, and I think other people that have a dog that might jump. Doesn't mean you can't put a four foot fence. It just means it gives that additional option of another six inches. It also might take care of more of this variance we're talking about. Make it four and a half feet, six foot vary, and now a six inch variance isn't such a big deal anymore. Like I said, I don't think it impedes any neighborliness, but it keeps kids in yards. It keeps dogs in yards. It assists with the health, safety, and welfare of the city in Stanton. With that, I think best part of a good speech is knowing when to shut up. So thank you very much. I know I probably opened up myself to now getting my fence measured. It's kind of what it sounds like here, but I want to be in compliance. And I, like I said, I want to live in a town that has these values. And I want the ordinance to reflect that, and I respectfully ask this council to consider four and a half feet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, do we have anyone with their hands raised? All right, would anyone else from the audience care? Come on up, Mr. Fossa.
My name is Al Fossa. West Aga, I'm at four oh one Bowling Street. And I just have a few questions, one or two questions. There have been some precedents that have been set here on fencing. Have they been settled? There's one place out here on Route eleven there where they have a bunch of shrubbery in front of the fence, and the fence is over six foot high, made out of block. Has that all been settled? That's a precedence that's going on. Has it been settled? I know they spent a hundred thousand dollars to settle it. It was kind of ridiculous what was going on. Doesn't make much sense. The next thing, the other thing I wanted to ask you, if you put up a fence with just shrubbery, can it be more than four feet? No metal, just shrubbery, tight shrubbery? I don't know. Can it be six feet? There are some fences that, they don't have metal fences, but there are some buildings along that road there that's over six feet. And I just don't understand. What's the problem?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
We normally do not engage at this time. After, after, after the, no, after the public hearing, we'll have Mr. Rhodes come back. So, Mr. Kessinger, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
Right, would anyone else from the audience care to address the council? All right. With that, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Rhodes, can you address the questions and concerns, please?
Okay, I heard one question regarding shrubs exceeding the height limit. And shrubs are not fences. They're not a structure. And as long as they're not on a corner lot at an intersection in that site triangle, they may exceed whatever limits council places on a fence. Yes, sir.
What was, if you're inclined to say so, what was Planning Commission's reasoning? Or did they have a big, the problem between forty-eight and fifty-four?
As Mr. Baber mentioned, they, they did say they wanted to keep this simple. I believe a couple of them said they didn't see an issue with what he was proposing, the picture he supplied to them. But they did not want to open the city up to something more, maybe more egregious that people would, you know, maybe more of a solid type wall or fence. And they were just trying to keep it very simple.
Mr. Rhodes, Brenda Mead, is the fifty-four inch height a standard height? Or would that be one of those height, fence heights that would have to be special ordered?
I have not looked into that. As far as like chain link and stuff like that, I do not believe that's a standard heights, but.
It seems to me that a, a, a lot of this was done because, because the forty-eight foot height is a standard height that wouldn't require special order and it wouldn't be more costly for citizens. And that we already have a good many four foot fences. So I, I just, it, you know, if, it just doesn't seem logical to me to increase it and then to a size fence that you'd have to special order.
Well, if that was the sole reason for increasing, allowing increase in the height, that is correct. But I don't believe that's the, the sole reason that the city would consider an increase in height. That is just one of the benefits of doing it.
Mr. Holmes?
Is there, is it possible to, for people to apply for a? What? Yeah, variance.
Well, you can apply for a variance to just about anything in the zoning code. However, that would not meet the standards for the board to approve. And certainly, staff would, would not be able to support a variance for a taller fence. I mean, I cannot imagine a situation where a fence would meet that hardship criteria, taking away reasonable use of a property by not being able to put a taller fence on it.
All right, any additional questions?
I just, does the neighborhood make any difference? I mean, he says he's got a large lot. I should have looked it up online to see where it was at. I mean, some neighborhoods in town are almost, you know, or border on rural. And I just didn't know if that, that was the case with his.
I, I wouldn't say that that's the case with his, but it's a very unique lot. Very large in size. Once again, staff and the plant commission wanted to try to keep this very simple. To try to make exception, lots of exceptions to the rule, to the standard. It really complicates it, trying to explain that to someone, and certainly we didn't want to require a permit for it.
This is Carolyn Dole. Mr. Rhodes, this may not be your particular area of expertise, but in the, in this constituent's situation, it's a, an unruly dog that jumps the fence. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be served just as easy by the four foot fence? And then building back from the top so the dog can't get over it because you've got an extra couple of feet going out perpendicular, I think is the term. That doesn't allow the dog to get over the fence instead of going height.
I, I, I know exactly what you're talking about because I built two fences like that because I had a dog that laughed at eight foot fences. So basically, basically, I, I made a ledge at the very top so it could not climb or throw itself over that. That may work in some cases. You know, to help eliminate a dog from jumping or climbing over a fence.
Yeah, I just worry that, you know, if we're, if, if it's this particular instance, there might be another solution for that dog. But I think the four foot being standard and to not get into the, to where we have walled walled residences where it's so high and solid fencing and, and all of that, it's, it's almost opening a can of worms. So, you know, I think the four foot was a reasonable accommodation. Anyway, that was my thought on the solution for it.
If I might add, in this particular lot, it slopes rather strongly down to, to the road. So a dog, you know, is ten feet back from the fence is higher than the fence. Maybe not exactly, but if you get my, what I'm trying to explain is it's not as, it's not a four foot leap for a dog. It's less than that, based on the topography.
So four and a half feet probably wouldn't make much difference.
Mr. Baber believes it does, would for his dogs.
All right, any additional questions or comments? Mr. Blair, you look like you want to say something.
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Well, this is Carolyn Dole, and I would just like to reiterate that, but I, I don't, I'm not particularly fond of creating a, 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 a change in an ordinance for one, one person. And, and if the planning commission has reviewed this and they're, they've come up with their suggestion of four feet, which is, which is a standard height. And it would be in compliance with what most people already have. I, I would certainly be in favor of making the motion to approve this as the planning commission recommended.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor by Counselor Dole and a second by Counselor Mead. Any further discussion? In hearing none, Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey? Ms. Dole? Ms. Darby? Mayor Oaks? Vice Mayor Robertson? Mr. Holmes? Ms. Mead? Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to item C, which is a public hearing. An introduction and public hearing of ordinance to amend the FY twenty twenty-three budget ordinance for the city of Stanton by adding budget amendment number two. Miss, go regard.
Jesse Moyers, our interim chief financial officer, will walk through this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm introducing the second budget amendment for FY twenty-three. The budget amendment totals eight million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for both city and schools combined. This budget amendment does require a public hearing, which was properly advertised on September first, twenty twenty-two. The city portion of this amendment totals nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and is to appropriate American Rescue Plan Act funds. Both items in this request this evening relate to flood mitigation. The first is three hundred thousand dollars for flood shields. These will be reimbursable grants available to local businesses in flood-prone, flood-prone areas. The funds will help with the cost to purchase and install flood shields. The second is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for tunnel improvements. The funds will be used for tunnel maintenance and improvements to maximize the capacity of the existing tunnels that convey Lewis and Peyton Creeks. Focus would be on inspection and maintenance of the tunnels, along with possible improvements to help mitigate choke points. The school portion of the budget amendment is seven point two million dollars. The purpose of the school amendment is to appropriate three point six million dollars from prior fiscal years accumulated, undesigned at. from prior fiscal years accumulated undesignated fund balance for the education, from the education fund. The three point six million dollar appropriation would be transferred to the school CIP fund. The second half of the school appropriation is to appropriate those same funds from the school CIP fund for the following items. Fifty thousand dollars for a school bus replacement reserve. Fifty thousand dollars for school furniture and fixture reserve. Fifty thousand dollars for technology. One hundred thousand dollars for the parking lot and roadway repair reserve. Two hundred thousand dollars for vehicle replacement reserves. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for CTE classroom equipment. Four hundred thousand dollars for the boiler replacement at Dixon. One million dollars set aside for outside agency obligations. And one and a half million dollars for the Shelburne Middle School Operations Facility Construction Project. The school board approved this amendment at their August eighth meeting. The interim city manager recommends the ordinance be introduced as presented and that the city council conduct a public hearing.
Are there any questions? Councilor Claffey?
Could you explain the one million dollars for the outside agency obligations?
We don't know if it's been decided, but it could help with the contributing to the fund that they want to renovate the VCTC with. The technical center. But right now, it's just reserved for outside agency, or outside agencies obligations.
Any additional?
Yeah, this is Brenda Mead. I just want to be clear on that. I, I, I realize that the vocational center, that, that maintenance and expansion is a responsibility of our schools as well as Augusta County and Waynesboro schools. Correct me if I'm wrong about that, and that they, they have put forth a plan of some kind to do significant renovation and expansion of that facility.
Yes, as far as I'm aware, two billion dollars has been contributed by Augusta County and a million, another million by Waynesboro. And they're hoping that Stanton will contribute a million.
And so, th- this is, this is the reserve that we're actually transferring to the, to the schools. Or where this is, this, this budget amendment just puts that million dollars in reserve for that.
Yes, it sets it aside in the school CIP fund.
Yeah, so that kind of, sort of, there's a saying in, on Broadway that if you put a gun on the mantle in the first act, you got to use it by the third. So it seems to me, it seems to me that, 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 that they're sort of down the road on this thing, but, you know. That's up to the school board, I guess, to decide how they want to use their money.
This is Carolyn Doll, if, if Ms. Mead is done with questions. And it, and it has to do with the, the school. Do you know what prior fiscal years this accumulated undesignated school fund balance came from?
I do not have the breakdown, but I think majority of it came from the last three fiscal years.
Three years, even though, even though we supposedly have underfunded them for decades, it, it, it really is a quandary to me that they could have a fund balance if they were underfunded for so many years. I don't, I don't expect you to answer that. It's kind of just a an observation where it, something doesn't sound, you know, exactly right on there. And then, I, I was going to ask about the one million in outside agency obligations because I wondered what, what outside agency we were obligated to. And then finally, the one point five million for Shelburne Middle School slash Operations Facility Construction. Do you have, I mean, does, on the city side, have we got any total projected costs for the Shelburne project? And what improvements it includes? Does it, does it include a whole separate building? Not just renovating the basement? And my other question is, what is the total projected cost for the maintenance building that will be built? Last I heard, on some land yet to be purchased or something, but we, we haven't gotten, I, I'm not aware of getting any information about those projects. So I wondered if anyone in city staff had been told any information about either of those projects?
I do not have those figures, no.
Ms. Beauregard, have, have you got those figures?
No, I, I've not seen any details yet.
I, I hope we're not looking at two Taj Mahals and then another one for Augusta County and Waynesboro, you know? Because, you know, we're, it, it's almost like they're using this undesigned as fund balance that they shouldn't have since they've been underfunded forever. And they're, and they're putting it towards to what could be massive projects that we just don't know anything about. So I'm just opening that up for an area where we could benefit. I think council could benefit from some, for some information on those two projects, like what's Shelburne going to cost? Is it, is, is half of that one point five million going to take care of the construction? I'm pretty sure it's not. And how much are we going to be on the hook for if they get into it? And it turns out that that's going to be a fifteen million dollar whatever, and then the maintenance, the operations facility is going to be another fifteen million. You know, I just worry when I don't know the figures. And I think it's worth us thinking about and trying to see if they will give us any information on it. So that, that's all I have to say.
Ms. Beauregard?
Let me just say, so there'll be an opportunity. We, city council will have a work session with the school board. And I asked, I told Dr. Smith about this, suggested this a few weeks ago on October twenty-seventh at your regular work session. So we'll be working with them to figure out what type of information, such as what you just mentioned, Councilor, Councilmember Doll, to share and have a discussion about at that time. And I, I think that's a great time to have that discussion. And that'll be the earliest we've ever had a budget work session with the schools to get ready for a budget.
So meanwhile, should we table this until the October twenty-seventh hearing?
You're talking about the one point five million in particular, just that one item?
I'm talking about the school portion of it. I mean, the, the city budget for the stormwater fund seems to be pretty cut and dry. We want to do that tonight. But the school portion, should we table until we have our October twenty-seventh explanation?
Well, I can't answer what, the, in terms of the other projects that are listed on here. I mean, there's other projects listed on there that have nothing to do with that project in particular, so I don't.
They're going to, are they going to start them in the next month?
That I don't know.
So this is just putting it in a reserve. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Blair?
I, I would add that tonight is not the vote.
You're not deciding.
This is just
An introduction.
An introduction.
And, and we can certainly get more information between now and the next meeting. And again, I'll just reiterate that on the October twenty-seventh, you'll have a, a work session with the school board. And at that, we'll be working on an agenda with Dr. Smith in the meantime, of Ms. Moyers and myself, so.
And I have a question. Is there any way that we can get the work session moved up so we have that before we take the actual vote?
If we're, if we're introducing this, this today, and then obviously, usually it's the next meeting that we have the vote.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I guess we could figure out the timing, but I don't know.
It just seems logical to me.
Mr. Blair, it looks like you want to say something.
No ma'am.
Okay, all right.
This is Carolyn Doll. I had one other piece of information to, that I think for the general public or anyone who's interested or any other council members. The, the school board, any fund balance from the school reverts back to the city unless we allow them to keep those fund balances, which we have done. Even though we underfunded them and they shouldn't have any, but it's, it's just important to understand that in, in many localities, those fund balances go back to the city from the school board, so. I, I just, that's another piece of information I think people should know. We've given them those fund balances for years.
Right. Vice Mayor Robertson?
I, I just want to, I want to thank my, my distinguished colleague for being so poignant tonight. I appreciate that, Carolyn.
I knew you would.
I, yeah, I, I, one other question. School bus replacement, fifty thousand?
It goes to a reserve.
And vehicle replacement, I, I, I thought maybe those figures should be flipped. I can't imagine a school bus for fifty grand.
Well, you can't. You can't get one for fifty.
No, and two hundred thousand for vehicle replacement. I mean, I reckon that's.
Those are also reserves, right?
Yes.
Council Holmes?
I was under, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I was under the impression that they were looking to lease the property from Mr. Evers to, to do the repair for the buses. Has that changed? That hasn't changed.
As far as I know, they have entered into that lease with a two-year term when a optional third.
That's right.
It's my understanding they want it to be able to lease while purchasing and building a facility, a permanent location for them so they no longer have to lease and they can have full ownership. So, that's my understanding. I don't know if you have any different information?
That's about all I know.
Okay. All right, well, this is an introduction, so I can entertain a motion at this time. And after the motion, then we will have the public hearing.
I, this is Brenda Mead. I just, for clarification, if we introduce this budget amendment tonight, is, does the clock start ticking on a timeframe by which we have to actually vote on this and make a decision?
Mr. Blair?
I don't believe there is such a time limit. What I am trying to do here is see if the notice. It does not, no, it, it does not appear, Councilor Mead, that the notice stated that the vote will take place on September twenty-second. The notice just stated that tonight, September eighth, would be a public hearing.
So we can have, we can conduct the public hearing and, and then organize a way to get the answers to the questions that we need from the school board. Is that correct?
I believe so.
So we're not limited to doing it at the next city council meeting? We could do it at the council meeting after that? The first meeting in October if we chose to?
You could. I believe there is an old AG's opinion, Attorney General's opinion that talks about from introduction to the time you take action. It does not have to be at the next meeting. But it has to be within a reasonable time, but I would think by the end of October would be a reasonable time.
So, but maybe the mayor would, or the city manager would arrange for a joint work session between us and the school board on, on the basis that we could get answers to our questions before we have to vote on this.
Ms. Beauregard, can you move the date up?
I, I can certainly work with this Dr. Smith. And I was just looking at the October thirteenth agenda. We can, I'll, I'll work with Dr. Smith to see what we can do.
Great.
One other comment, the, and I would like to applaud city staff for moving forward with the flood shield grants and the tunnel improvements. Those are some hardcore, you know, you can see the infrastructure happening that will help in our flood, flooding problems. And I don't want to hold that piece up, so, so I'll throw that out there. I, I, because the sooner we approve that, the sooner they can start going through the RFP, IFB, RFP, whatever they're doing for those projects and, and get, get people working on them.
Can we pull that part out?
I, I don't know that I would necessarily do that at this time because it's an introduction. And we are going to have the meeting moved up, if possible, to the first meeting in October.
We'll try to work on that in first.
I was going to say that I think it would be best, again, tonight is simply an introduction
Right.
and a public hearing. And we can certainly look at separating that if that's the council's pleasure for a action item at the next meeting, simply on the stormwater elements that you're going to hear tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, just for the audience, normally when we vote to introduce an ordinance, the following meeting is when we take action on the matter. And in this case, we may be separating it out in order for us to be able to have the conversation with the school board. So, all right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I just have one more question. What was the, the remodel of the, the Vote Tech? What was, what was the, the, the dollar amount that they were asking originally? Was it fourteen million? Nine?
Sitting?
Yes, one, no, for the whole, for the whole thing.
Um, gosh, I can't remember. It was a lot.
Yeah, I thought it was.
But I can't remember off the top of my head what that dollar amount was. I mean, it was in the double-digit millions easily for the whole project, not the city share, because we're twenty-five percent of whatever that total is. So we can, we can double check that as well, so.
Councilor Holmes?
I move to introduce an ordinance, amend in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget by adding budget amendment number two, totaling eight million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that council conduct a public hearing of the ordinance.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
There.
I'll second that.
All right. Councilor Amy Darby has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Now we will have the public hearing. So just like before, I'll bang the gavel, coming up to the podium. Let the council know how you feel concerning this particular ordinance. And we'll alternate between the audience and Zoom. The public hearing is now open. Welcome.
Good evening, members of council. I quickly read the agenda tonight and then quickly went back and did a few searches on the city website. My biggest concern about the flood protection monies and as they are described for being spent is that one of the, the elements was they were going to address choke points. When you read the Wiley Wilson report, two of the major choke points are historic buildings. And they are, they are, one of them is fully rehabbed. It is endangered by Augusta County. The other used to be the headquarters of Historic Stanton Foundation. It is in a long-term mid-rehabilitation, but there's been quite a bit of structural work done on that building. I certainly hope that the Historic Preservation Commission, Historic Stanton Foundation, the community is not positioned here to have to stop and fight demolition for this money. There are many ways to mitigate flooding situations, completely interfere them. But I do not believe we ought to be targeting our historic infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Does anyone have their hands raised?
No ma'am.
Would anyone else from the audience care to address the city council? Are you guys leaving? Okay. I didn't want to not give you the opportunity to speak. All right. With that, the public hearing is now closed. All right, moving on to item E, the annual report of disposition of surplus property.
Mayor Oaks with item D.
Did I miss D? Oh, mercy.
This is Carolyn Doll. Before we leave that last issue, before we vote on this, I would really like to know Mr. Strassler's concerns about the historic buildings. I, I thought this was just about the tunnel improvements. Um, so, so if we could get some more information on what he was talking about, I would greatly appreciate it because I, I did, I had no idea that there was any historic buildings in danger, so.
I'll reach out to Mr. Strassler and we'll have a conversation.
All right, thank you.
And I'll talk to John Glover as well, so.
All right. I'm just trying to save y'all from yet another public hearing. But item D, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to issue general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed eight point five million for the financing of the Gardner Springs Pump Station Project. Yeah, this is an important one. Ms. Bow regard.
Uh, Jesse Moyers will also walk through this.
Hey, welcome back.
He has some special guests with her as well.
I mean, it's my pleasure to be here before you, the Seamen, with this item. Tonight, we're introducing and considering a bond ordinance relating to the financing of the Gardner Springs Pump Station Project. In addition, we're required to hold a public hearing. The public hearing was properly advertised in the Daily News Leader on August twenty-fifth and September first. As you know, Gardner Springs is imperative to the city's water supply, and the design has began many years ago. The project includes the construction of new water pumping, uh, new water pumping station, demolishing the existing pump station, construction of a platform on the remaining foundation, and the furnishing installment and integration of a fifteen-hundred kilowatt generator, as well as the payment of associated costs with the debt issuance. The maximum remaining cost for this project is estimated at, uh, eight point five million dollars. The construction piece of this project is currently out for bid with a bid opening scheduled for next week. The city at that time can change the amount of the debt, if necessary, up to the maximum of eight point five. The city has explored multiple financing options for this project. On behalf of the city, Davenport and Company distributed a request for proposal for bank financing, and thirteen proposals were received on August twenty-fifth. Davenport also assisted the city with preparing and submitting an application in order to potentially participate in the Virginia Resources Authority's twenty-twenty-two Fall Virginia Pool Financing Program. We have two guests with us tonight, and I've, that I've been working closely with on the financing for this project. Chris Culp from Huntington Andrews and Kirk LLC, who serves as bond counsel, and Ted Cole from Davenport and Company LLC, who is the city's financial advisor for this, of this debt issuance. At this time, I will turn it over to Ted so that he can walk us through the details of the various funding options available to the city for this project.
Welcome, Ted.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Appreciate being here. Um, I believe all of you have in your agenda packet, it's a, a brief, um, presentation that I will go through. There are page numbers in the lower right corner. Um, and please stop me if you have any questions. Um, the first page, page two, uh, largely was covered, um, by Ms. Moyer in terms of what the project is about. We are using an, an estimated eight point five million as an upper limit to what the borrowing could be. Um, we have time in our schedule to adjust that amount, um, based on the bids that are coming in next week. And again, we did what we call dual track this. We're looking at bank financing as well as participating in the Virginia Resources Authority program, which the city has used before. Uh, the banks that submitted proposals are listed on page three alphabetically. Um. We've got thirteen banks that submitted, which is a great number. A lot of interest, a lot of banks were interested. Many of these banks, you all will, will recognize their names, some you may not, but they are all active in, um, proposing and bidding on municipal, municipal bonds and municipal funding. So digging into those proposals, go to page four. A lot of numbers here, but let me kind of get you oriented. The banks that are, uh, listed on, under column A, right, on the left-hand side of the page, um, columns B and C are looking at, um, fifteen and twenty-year rates that we requested from the banks. Um, and then we get into some key dates that are associated with the proposals, acceptance dates, deadlines to close. And as you work your way over to the right-hand side, we get into the prepayment language. We've highlighted the rates for M and T Bank and Truist Bank as the most attractive rates for either the fifteen or the twenty-year proposal. You will notice some of those rates have a designation of BQ and NBQ stands for bank qualified or non-bank qualified. It's our expectation in talking with staff that the city should be able to borrow for this loan on a bank-qualified basis. That is a tax-exempt designation because the expectation is for the current calendar year, calendar year twenty-twenty-two, we won't be borrowing more than ten million. So our expectation would be that we can take advantage of the bank-qualified rates that are shown there, which are slightly better. So the lowest fifteen-year rate that we received was from M and T Bank at a three point two-one percent. That would be fixed for the entire fifteen-year term. Um, we would have to close, as you work your way over to the right, by September thirtieth, and you could prepay that loan going forward, either in whole or in part, with a three percent penalty through, uh, the first two years, a two percent penalty goes out to twenty-five, a one percent penalty out to twenty-nine, and no penalty to prepay after twenty-twenty-nine. So they're sort of have a step-down penalty, um, schedule for prepayment. Truist, which is the.
I have a question, if you don't mind, I have a question at this point.
Sure.
Uh, is the, is the rate, the, uh, three point two-one percent sufficiently low to offset the higher prepayment penalties in the M and T deal?
Is it sufficiently low? It's.
Is it, is it attractive enough that you would take a three point two-one percent rate and take the chance or take the risk that we may end up with a three percent penalty if we needed to pay it off early? Uh, you know, from a financial perspective, you know, what's the trade-off?
Well, I guess the, if you had to pay it off early, I'm not sure what would trigger that event, and most, normally we think of this as a, a voluntary prepayment for a refunding for savings, which you would only exercise if, if rates were adequately low enough to generate savings with whatever costs and penalties might be included. So we don't know what rates will do over the course of this fifteen-year period, but, um, so I, I'm not sure I can tell you one way or the other.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, please.
One other question. I just want to, you said we have to close by September thirtieth, but I also looked right before that and said, in order to get that three point two-one, we have to, we have to act by September fifteenth to lock the rate?
That's right. We have to, what, what, what we're going to be asking you all this evening is to give us some direction on how to proceed with either the bank financing or the Virginia Resources Authority. And if it's bank financing, which bank? That, that can be given to us after the public hearing by way of a, a motion or something simple like that. And with that, we can go back to whomever the recommended lender is and tell them our plan is to move forward with them, thereby locking in the rate. Um, so I wanted to also touch base on Truist, which is the, the merged, um, SunTrust and BB and T. Um, we highlighted them for the twenty-year term. Not all banks will go out twenty years. You can see a number did, but a number did not bid. Their, their bank-qualified rate was a three fifty-four. Um, we need to close by October seventh. They allow for prepayment of the loan in whole only, so don't allow for partial prepayments. They allow in whole at any time with a one percent penalty for the first half of the loan, ten years, and no penalty for the second half of the loan. Um, and you'll notice that obviously the rates vary quite a bit from low to high, from bank to bank. The prepayment language varies quite a bit. Those with bank financing, um, there's really not a standard prepayment language that you would expect to see. So what we have done, moving forward in this presentation, is focused on M and T for fifteen years and Truist for twenty years, as well as the Virginia Resources Authority, which can accommodate up to thirty years. The banks, right, Truist will go twenty. Um, and these are going to be fixed rate, no variable rate. They're going to be mortgage-style payments, meaning every year the payment will be the same. It will be combined principal and interest, but the payment will be the same. So the bank, we have the ability to go fifteen or twenty, and if we want to go longer than that, out to thirty, we would look at VRA. And if you look at, at page five, across the very top on the interest rates, you'll see we're restating the M and T rate of a three twenty-one, the Truist rate of a three fifty-four. And when we provided this presentation to city staff, we estimated, and we can estimate VRA pretty accurately, their interest rates for twenty years at a three sixty-six, for twenty-five years at a three ninety-two, thirty years at a four oh eight. Since we put this book together, those rates have moved higher. The bank rates that we received are locked in. But the VRA rates are moving, and they will continue to move until VRA is in the market in late October.
One more question, if you can. Based on the eight and a half million dollars, what is the payback based on, uh, M and T over fifteen years, three two one, versus the payout of Truist twenty years, three point five four? In other words, how much we're going to, how much are we going to end up paying more for fifteen versus twelve?
That takes us to page six. And so what you'll see, we've done it on an eight million dollar borrower. We, we are assuming here that when we close the loan, we are delivering to the city an even eight million dollars as shown on line fifteen. We asked the banks for approval up to eight and a half, just in case bids came in a little high. The eight million that we're using in this analysis was more informed by the most current working estimate of the project. So in every one of these scenarios, we're delivering eight million to the city. And so column B is the M and T. So you can see, in the year that you all are in, fiscal year twenty-three, there is a payment due. Um, it's a, a fraction of a year's payment. And then it levelizes at six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year. You can see the grand total at the bottom, ten point four million. That's if it's never prepaid or refunded, and it, and it goes through full matured. Truist, you can see, levelizes at about five seventy a year. Um, and the total payback there is eleven point five million. So you're getting hopefully both data points, annual payments, total payback. Column D is VRA under twenty years, uh, does not look quite as good as Truist. And I would note again that VRA rates will continue to move with the market until they price their bonds on behalf of the pool participants on October twenty-fifth, that green box on the right. And at least in the last week or two, those rates have continued to move higher. And then we wanted to show you, which is unique to VRA, a twenty-five-year term and a thirty-year term, you can go longer through their program with fixed rates. The, the annual payments go a little lower, uh, but the total payback over time is, is greater. So that, to us, is sort of the menu of options that we wanted to put in front of you all, answer any questions you have. Um, obviously, as was noted, there's a public hearing to be held, there's an ordinance to be adopted. And then ultimately, we would like to have some direction from you all to, as to which option you'd like to move forward with. Keep in mind, we know the project is getting bid, project bids are coming in next week, and if for some reason they come and they're just unworkable, you know, everything stops. So by giving us that direction to go forward with XYZ, you're not committing yourself, uh, and there's no turnback. You can stop this process if there's an issue with the bids or something else occurs, um, because you're going to see in our schedule, um, which is on the next page, um, we would plan to come back to you at your next meeting, September twenty-second, where you would adopt the final resolution that would have the form of the financing documents. So we've tried to time that, that it occurs after the project bids come in. And if for some reason, uh, we aren't comfortable taking that final step on September twenty-second, we just stop the process and we revisit it later.
I, I got one other question. To, not just from you, Ted, but, um, to Leslie and Jesse, do you see, I mean, are we all right, six hundred, almost seven hundred thousand a year? Is that right? That, that's not going to place any undue burden on us?
For the one with the fifteen-year term?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yes, it was. My recommendation is to go with the Truist twenty years, and that's based on the analysis by Davenport and looking at the, the water fund capacity. The difference between the twenty and the thirty, because thirty, what was, was originally in Phil's plan. But if we were to pay ninety-five thousand dollars more in debt service per year, we would save almost two point nine million dollars over the life of the loan between the twenty-year and the thirty-year term. But we're going to have to look at raising the water rates. They've been held steady for the last two years. But we, this is assuming a five percent increase, um, that we'll be introducing at the FY twenty-four budget process.
I, and I just, we. Can I say, I mean, I think it's important that the citizens understand what we're talking about. And I see some of you shaking your head, why are we taking on this increased debt? You need to understand that this particular project is a pipeline that is on year ninety-eight of a hundred-year lifespan.
Mr. Robertson, that's not, this is the Gardner Springs pump. This is not the pipeline.
The problem with this site is, it's very, it's in a floodplain, and, and if we had the rains that we've been having, it's possible that it can flood out and, 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 and.
Blew the water. If it gets wiped out.
Yeah, and wipe it out. So that's why we need to raise it up, and we, we keep kicking this can down the road a little bit.
Right, that's what I.
And, and I mean, it's real important that we do it, and I, I agree with the Truist because if we get an opportunity down the road that we want to refinance or throw it in with another loan, we don't have to pay any penalty on it. And it's, it doesn't seem between the fifteen-year and the twenty-year, it doesn't seem any, that, that's, that's chump change.
Yeah, and the problem with the fifteen is the higher debt service per year, and we have, um, the North River Pipeline in the future that we have to consider, that we don't max out our debt capacity in the water fund, um.
Also have.
Dropping down to the fifteen-year.
We never know what's going to happen with that either.
Brenda Mead, I have a question. What, what is the economic life of the Gardner Springs Pump Project?
Jeff, you know?
Is, so, so for instance, if we, it, it's, it, it's like, uh, to me, if you buy a car, uh, and you finance the car for ten years, you know, are you then kind of exceeding the economic life of that car and financing it over more than its economic life? So, Mr. Johnston, I know you can answer the question. What is the economic life of the Gardner Springs, Springs Pump Project?
Well, it's, it's really sort of a two-part answer. So this, this project is rebuilding, uh, the pump house, uh, elevating it above the floodplain. Uh, so the, the life of that structure, of the, of the bricks that are holding it up at that height would be seventy-five to a hundred years, uh, you know, more obviously if we are diligent in our, in our maintenance. Uh, now, the actual mechanical parts of the pump house, the pumps and some of the other things, the generator, uh, will have a, a, a little bit shorter lifespan. Uh, the generator, it's, you know, it's going to be in, in running hours. Uh, the pumps, we, I would expect that we would have to recondition and, and replace those maybe at ten to fifteen years. But, uh, you know, the, the, the salient part of this, of this project is getting, is the facility, which has a, which has a much, much longer, uh, lifespan.
Thank you.
Well, this is Carolyn Doll, and, and first I'd like to say, Ms. Moyers, I hope you can continue to say it's a pleasure to present. Thanks. Don't take any of my questions personally, because they're not. So, my, my only question on this, uh, is, have we tried to get a competitive grant from the uh, ARPA money? Not what was given, not, not what we've gotten, but there's other pots of money out there. Have we tried applying for that?
Yes, we applied through the VDH, Department of Health, for their ARPA funds for this project, and ultimately. project, and ultimately we were turned down. They had a lot more applications and they had funding available.
We should, we should contact Senator Warner and, and tell him. And he said, he said truly, he said that we should, he would support and he would help us, any localities to get infrastructure projects done. He wants to see them happen in Virginia. So just a, a thought, you know, if it's not too late to, you know, maybe, maybe talk to Senator Shandor Planning District Commission, they're the grant gurus, and see if they have any, any ideas of how to, how to get that done. Because I know that, that infrastructure bill was specifically addressing water and stormwater, you know, those kinds of infrastructure. And so I, I was just a thought. If we can get the feds to pay for it, that's the best financing.
And I believe Senator Kane made the same commitment. Great, any additional questions? So with that, we have a public hearing. I will bang the gavel, you can come on up and give us your thoughts and we'll alternate. Public hearing is now open. One up, Mr. Fossa.
Good truth. I am flabberg, my name is Albino Fossa, four oh one Bowling Street, Stanton. I am flabbergasted at all of these numbers. They seem to me way, way out of line. I don't think you, if this is an emergency, that's one thing. If it's not an emergency, I think you all have to give it a lot more thought, because I think you can do much, much better elsewhere. And I think they're pushing it too hard for the good of the city. So I strongly suggest that you reject this situation and wait and go and do more investigation and save the city several millions of dollars, because the economy is not that good and things are going to change very, very quickly. Very quickly. And I think you should really, really think about it and let, put it on the shelf somewheres.
Thank you. Mr. Kessicker, does anyone have their hands raised?
No ma'am.
Would anyone else like to address the city council? With that, the public hearing is now closed. Just for a point of clarification, Mr. Blair, I see how the motion is written up. Do we need to include anything as far as Truist or whatever the case may be with M and T?
Well, a, and let's, and, and I know Mr. Culp is here as well, but when you look at the proposed motion in your packet, obviously, it, it's just authorizing the eight point five million for the general obligation bonds. And the plan, I believe, tonight is simply for that, though I will let Mr. Culp address this as well. It's, tonight is about issuing the total amount of the bonds. September twenty-second, although I think tonight there, there is a request from Mr. Cole to sort of get a head nod of which option you want. But that ultimately, that resolution on the twenty-second will have more details about the, the option that you pick and that will formalize that option.
Thank you.
Members of council, Chris Culp from Huntington Andrews, Curtham, Richmond. Yes, as Mr. Blair indicated, there are really two things, we could break this into two. One is really the consideration of the ordinance, which, which is the general authorization. We'd like to go ahead and get that started, if that's the council's desire. But it would also be helpful to the financing team to know how to prepare the resolution and to start through the next stages with whichever lender and which term the council is feeling is, is the right way to proceed. And then we will come back at the next meeting with the bond resolution that has those particular details for you all to consider.
Thank you for the clarification.
Right, that's fair.
All right, at this time I'll entertain a motion.
I got one. Madam Mayor, I move that city council adopt the ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the maximum principal amount of eight point five million for the Gardner Spring Pump Station project.
Right, there's a motion on the floor by Councilor Claffey, is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
Right, there's a second by Councilor Amy Darby. Any further discussion? This is Brenda Mead. I, I just wanted to add, Mr. Fossa's concerns about taking on a significant amount of, of debt in a, in, at what, what is not the most stable economy are, are valid concerns. I, I want to assure him though, that this pump has been something we've been talking about for some time. And I don't mean a month or two, I, I'm, I'm talking about a, a few years.
Years.
So we've deferred the project until, we're now at the point where if there was an emergency, it would cost us a great deal more to react to the emergency and repair and make sure that the city's water supply was, was preserved. So waiting in this case isn't going to save us any money. And so I, I am going to vote, my, my preference will be to go with the, with the fifteen-year Truist proposal. And I'm going to vote in favor of authorizing the issuance of the bonds. Councilor Holmes?
I want to echo what Brenda just said, because I've been on council for eight years and this has been something we've talked about every year. And, and, and it really needs to be done, because we can end up with bad water, just like a lot of other municipalities have. And we also supply water to the county and other places. So it's really, it's, it's economically, it's an engine that drives, I mean, it's something that we need for, to, to grow. So we need to keep our water supply secure.
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Just as a, a point of clarification, I believe, Mr. Claffey's going, Brenda, the Truist should be for the twenty-year, because that will be less in the long run.
I beg your pardon, you're right.
All right.
Right.
This is Carolyn Doll. I would like to add that for, for the general public's benefit, that we have two really great water sources. One of them is coming through that hundred-plus-year-old pipe that could go, you know, and the other comes from Gardner Springs where the pump could go. So we need to take action on one of those two. And actually fixing Gardner Springs is the simpler, not that I'm doing either one of them, but this, it's the simpler problem to get fixed. And, and we're using funds from the water fund. It's not our general revenue. It comes from the fees that people pay for their water. And so we're using those fees that we've saved up to help fund the debt service on this. So, and that way, if the bad thing happens on the other water source, we've got a good solid one that we can operate with and not, not be like poor Jackson, Mississippi.
Jackson, Mississippi.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm for whatever Ms. Moyers wants. I trust her. I want her to keep being a pleasure to present things, so.
All right. I would just like to state that the city of Stanton's known for having high-quality water and whatever we can do to be proactive, I mean, an ounce of prevention. So with that, Mr. Kessicker, please call the roll.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ocean Carries?
Thank you. So that's the first part. The second part, you're looking for the head nod and it sounds like it's Truist.
Truist of twenty years.
Twenty years. I, I think that's all we need at this point to proceed and let them know. And then that is what will be memorialized in the resolution for your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are you happy, Jesse? Still a pleasure, right? Now we can move on to item E, an annual report of disposition of surplus property. Not a public hearing. Ms. Boerigard?
Jesse Moyers also presented this, and this is just informational, so there's no, this report, which is an annual report.
All right, hello again. The sale of surplus property is allowed per ordinance twenty fifteen dash oh five, which authorizes staff to dispose of surplus personal property, which has been designated obsolete or has minimal value without specific approval from council. To do so, all sales must be, meet the following criteria. The property must be designated as surplus in writing by the Director of Finance or Designee, and it must be endorsed by the city manager or designee prior to auction. Ordinance twenty fifteen dash oh five calls specifically for the use of the GovDeals Government Surplus Auction Site to dispose of city surplus property to the highest bidder. GovDeals is the most widely used government surplus auction website in the state of Virginia and now has around two hundred and forty locality governments throughout the Commonwealth using it. GovDeals charges twelve and a half percent commission, which can be absorbed by the locality or split with, or the purchaser, or split between both the city or the purchaser. In FY nineteen, the city of Stanton began passing the entire commission onto the purchaser. The current rate structure equals twelve and a half percent premium to the buyer and zero percent to the city. The ordinance further states that the finance department must report annually to council about the categories of property that have been disposed of. For comparison purposes, FY twenty-one, we sold seven items for thirteen thousand five sixty-one, and we transferred three items. In twenty-two, we sold sixty-five items for a total of seventy-seven thousand nine sixty-three, and we transferred four items. The transferred items are in your packet, there are two school buses that went from the city schools to the Parks and Rec Department, a twenty-twenty-one Chevrolet Tahoe that went from the Sheriff Department to the Police Department, and a two thousand and nine Jeep Liberty went from the Police Department to the Sheriff Department. The breakdown of the categories can be found in your agenda packet under item E, attachment one. With the largest item this year being the sale of the golf carts for a total of forty-seven thousand one thirty-two, and I believe there were like twenty-three golf carts that were sold.
Are all these the old golf carts?
Yes.
Yes, they are. Since two thousand and nine, the city has received over four hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars in surplus sales through the GovDeals auction site. And finally, the next annual surplus property report is on the city manager's master schedule and will take place next September, October timeframe of twenty twenty-three.
Just a point of, this is Brenda, point of clarification on the golf courts, golf carts, that's not all of the old golf carts. That's only about twenty-two of them, right?
I came up with twenty-three.
Yeah, so there were still a number of golf carts, golf carts, sorry, that are, that are usable and in good shape. Is that correct?
I, I believe they kept the, the best of ten. And, yes, in their fleet.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Carolyn Doll. I, I am, first of all, I'm a big fan of GovDeals. I, I have used it myself as a business manager for, for years. And yes, indeed, make the, make the purchaser pay the premium and not the locality or the state entity, whatever. But I have to say, I was amazed at the money we got for golf carts that supposedly couldn't even run and were so decrepit, they couldn't, they were just useless. And, and they averaged two thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars apiece. I, I, I would love to hear how that happened.
Well, can I, can I answer that?
Sure.
The truth, the truth of the matter is when we did order the new golf carts, we had to wait over ten months because they're in such backlog. And golf carts, if you drive to eighty, up eighty-one to Harrisonburg, you're familiar with a lot that was there to the right that used to be loaded and there's none left. And we currently have a order for fifty carts at Ironwood Country Club, and they can't get theirs fulfilled either. Golf carts have done the same thing that used cars have done. The value has shot up because they're unobtainable. And, and the twenty-two carts, we are shocked at how much money we got for it. It was a great bonus, they came along, but they were not that good of carts and they were not in very good shape. And these were the worst twenty-two. They kept ten and they occasionally use those ten, you know, when they have a big tournament and they need fifty carts. But they are not the primo carts by any matter of means.
Old cart couldn't even pull the hills that.
Right, no, it's true.
But, but evidently they, they're usable, you know, I.
People take them and rebuild them, but, but notice, notice what goes on on eighty-one at that lot that you see right before exit two forty. They don't have anything left. I mean, the, the whole inventory of golf carts has disappeared.
We should sell some more.
Yeah.
As a revenue generator.
Lot of, a lot of these businesses, communities, these private communities, homes and these, they, people buy them up to use them to go to, you know, around to their homes to visit and everything else. They're on flat land. The ones that were sold couldn't pull the hills they'd get to hell.
Councilor Holmes?
I, I, I'm curious, what was the heavy equipment? Was, it was only one vehicle, I assume, or one piece of equipment?
It says it was a two thousand K's five ninety Super L Series two loader backhoe.
Are we replacing that? Oh, good.
Great, anything else? Well, I would just like to say to our school board member, Mr. Venable, thank you for the transfer of the buses. All right. This is just for information only, so thank you. I hope it's still a pleasure. That takes us to item F, a consideration of a final plat for Barrington, Section Six. Ms. Boerigard?
Mr. Rodney Rose is here to present this.
All right. Welcome.
Good evening, one last time.
Yeah.
Back in December of two thousand and five, Par Four LLC requested and received approval for a conditional rezoning of approximately nine acres located at the end of Stalker Street. The land was rezoned from R two low-density residential to R three medium-density residential. The conditional zoning allows for a maximum of thirty-six units. A preliminary plat for this development was approved by the planning commission in two thousand and six and amended in two thousand and thirteen. To date, three final plats have been approved, resulting in the creation of twenty-eight lots. And before you today, for your consideration, is, is a plat for the final eight lots. I would note that improvements to the public street, including curb and gutter, stormwater, water, sanitary sewer have all been constructed and approved by the city. And the configuration of the final plat is in general conformance with the approved preliminary plats. And at the planning commission's July twenty-one, twenty-two meeting, the commission considered this request, and on a five to zero vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the final plat. This is not a public hearing, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? Councilor Claffey?
No.
All right. This is Brenda Mead. Councilor Mead? Mr. Rhodes, these, these are about like two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar homes, isn't that right? That's, it looks at the assessed values at this point are.
I, I did not look at, these are all townhouses, but I did not look at the assessed value of the current ones.
Okay, just curious. And, and do you know, we happen to know if there's a homeowners association with this development? So I'm sorry, I know it's out, I should have sent you the question for them.
Actually, city planner Tim Hartless oversees the, the plats, but I told him he didn't need to stay this late for this meeting.
That's okay, that's okay. I'll, I'll.
We have an answer.
Hold on, we got the answer.
Come on up, please, thank you.
Yes, there is. Homeowners Association, there is one.
There is a homeowner.
Yeah.
Okay, great, and no problems, the homeowners are satisfied, the homeowners And no problems, the homeowners are satisfied, the homeowners association is financially solid, all that kind of stuff.
My knowledge it is, we're, the developer's not involved with the homeowners association anymore. We turned it over to the residents, the what we do a couple of years ago.
Uh huh.
Just like any other homeowners association.
Yeah.
Are times when people don't like something, but they work it out.
Yeah, but it was solvent when you turned it over, isn't that right?
No, we were developing it. We sold, we turned it over after we got certain number of residents that sold.
Yes, but I, the homeowners association accounts were solvent when you turned it over, is that correct?
Everything is in order.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else with that? I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Steve Claffey.
I move that council approve the final plat as recommended by the planning commission.
Right, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I second. It's Terry Holmes.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessiger, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us on to item G, a consideration of resolution establishing the percentage of relief at 35% for purposes of the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, also known as PPTRA. Ms. Bow regard.
Maggie Reagan, our Commissioner of Revenue, will present this item.
And thank you for hanging in there with us.
Absolutely. It's past my bedtime, though, so let's let's roll on this. Madam Mayor, members of council, I come before you every September to set, recommend that you approve a set rate for the PPTRA, the Personal Property Tax Relief. This is the amount that is sent to the city from the state government. It is a static amount, one, $1,652,200 that we receive every year. And I'm recommending this year that the council set the rate at 35% to fully exhaust that for the benefit of our citizens.
Right, any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Madam. Counselor Holmes.
I move that a resolution as proposed be adopted establishing the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, PPPTRA, percentage at 35%.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
All right, Vice Mayor Robertson, a second. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none. Mr. Kessiger, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now that you've given your motion, I always provide you with your facts about our vehicles. So you got to have that. We have 24,822 taxable vehicle vehicles in the city this year. We're down 17. Our highest value vehicle is a Land Rover. And for the first time in my tenure, at least, this the most popular vehicle has been taken over by an SUV, no longer a sedan. So Honda CRVs are now our most popular vehicle in the city, followed by Civics, Accords, and Camrys. We have more Fords than anything else, and we know our Ford truck lovers in the city. I think we might have one up here on the dais, followed by Toyota, Honda, Chevy, Nissan, and Subaru. Our oldest vehicle is still our 1920 Model A. That is still taxable. I don't tax golf carts, though, so I can't give you a value on that. Average age or average model year for vehicles, 2011. And we had 185 new vehicles, new 2022 vehicles purchased. I don't know where they got them. We are down 13 motorcycles to 688 this year. So those are your vehicle facts for 2022.
Maggie. Vice Mayor.
One correction, 1920 would be a Model T.
It says it's a Model A, and it's always said that.
Really? They don't.
I'm gonna tell you where it is, and you go over there and argue with her.
Might want to leave that one alone. Vice Mayor. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item H, a consideration of resolution amending, restating, and reordaining Chapter 3.35 transient occupancy tax of Title III Stanton City Code to confirm with the Code of Virginia. Ms. Bow regard.
I'll invite Maggie Reagan back to the podium.
Come on back.
Thank you. So this item is is for the the good work of Mr. Blair, much appreciated, to amend and restate, reordain Chapter 3.35 of the transient occupancy tax of Title III Stanton City Code to conform with the Code of Virginia. Virginia Code Sections 58 dot 1 dash 602, 581 six 12 point 2, and 581 3826 were amended to change the process by which realist, retail sales and use tax and transient occupancy taxes are collected from sales involving accommodations intermediaries. That's your short term rentals. The amendments require the accommodations intermediaries to collect sales tax and occupancy taxes and remit them to the state and the locality respectively. And this is a change to eliminate the requirement to remit any portion of that to directly to a hotel. The amendments were requiring the intermediaries intermediaries to submit to the locality each month the property addresses and the gross receipts for all accommodations facilitated by the intermediary in such locality. The proposed amendments also modify the definitions of accommodations, accommodations intermediary, accommodations provider, and room charge. Additional amendments are made to the provisions for collection and remittance. So essentially, what we're doing is bringing our local code into in line with the state code that was changed by some legislation that passed in the 2022 General Assembly session. And so I I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about that.
Ms. Reagan, this is Brenda Mead. I have a quick question. Are accommodations intermediaries, companies like Trivago and Booking.com and Kayak, is that one an accommodations intermediaries? They're not the provider of the accommodation, but they're the ones who are selling the accommodations? Is that correct?
So they're the platforms and and a couple of them, the most prevalent names in the marketplace are Airbnb, Airbnb and Verbo. Booking.com is also an intermediary. Some of those others that you mentioned are really not intermediaries in the fact that they don't facilitate transactions, but they direct a search. So they're more more of a search engine type. But yes, we are specifically talking about internet platforms that facilitate a transaction between a host and a guest.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. Great.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Holmes.
Well, this all, this will cover B and Bs and things also.
It will, it will cover any accommodations provider. It's specifically the changes in the code are directed towards the accommodations intermediaries because that's what was addressed in the General Assembly changes. But but the 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 method is 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 across accommodations providers, yes.
Right. Any additional question?
I was.
Or I'm sorry, Counselor Mead.
Yeah, I was just gonna go ahead and make the motion. I think we beat this horse to death and.
All right. I would like to make one more comment if, because I would like to clarify for the folks who are, I've had some questions from short term rental hosts, and they'll be receiving an update from me after you approve this ordinance change this evening. But this does also change that limitation that has always been in the Stanton City Code regarding the number of persons that are accommodated and removes that from from the code. So we will be expecting accommodations transient occupancy tax to be collected and remitted on all accommodations provided.
Was it at four?
It was.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that point on the record.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry, I interrupted.
All right, Counselor Mead.
I move that city council adopt the proposed amendments to Stanton City Code, Chapter 3.35, as presented.
Right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's Terry Holmes.
Counselor Holmes has seconded. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none. Mr. Kessiger, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Brenda.
Ms. Mead.
Sorry about that. Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to matters from the interim city manager, Ms. Bow regard.
Sure, I have a few items this evening. I'll start with a question that was posed about proclamations. And I'll start by saying there's currently no city policy guideline or procedure in place to help guide proclamations and other honors that are bestowed by a local, by the city. It's not uncommon, though, for a locality to have such guidelines, procedures in place. So what Mr. Blair and I have spoken with to with this Mayor Oaks about is having this discussion with a recommendation for guidelines and procedures, along with the discussion of other city got, city council procedures and policies at your, on the agenda for the council retreat, which will take place in January, once the new council is seated. So that is our recommendation at this time. The second item I'd like to bring up is.
Ms. Bow regard, I have a question. There is a request on the table at this time, made by Councilor Doll and seconded by myself. I'd like to make sure we move forward with that.
Through email.
Yes, we're in receipt of that email. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The second item I'd like to bring up is some good news. The city of Stanton was granted the honor of being the most beautiful small town in Virginia by Only in Your State, which is in, which is an online, for lack of a better word, which is an online journal. Second, Queen City Mischief and Magic was named top festival in USA Today, and this festival starts in just over two weeks, so get ready for that. And finally, next Wednesday on September 14, from 6 to 7:30, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission is holding an event. It's a meet and greet. It's at Montgomery Hall Park in the I reading Givens Administration Building. There's actually copies of the invitation on the table over there, so feel free to take one with you. The purpose of the meet and greet will be to meet DEI Commission members, learn about their timeline and deliverables, and how you can support their mission and work. If you want to contact the commission, you can do so by grabbing an invite and looking up the email, but they do have their own email address, which is DEI@CI.stanton.v a.us. And that's all I have this evening.
Right, thank you. That takes us to matters from the public. This part of the city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the city of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. Right, with that, Matters from the Public, we're now open. If you would like to come to the podium. Welcome back, Mr. Foster.
I hope I don't ruffle your feathers too much. I want to, I came here with this item. You mentioned something about it. It's probably one of the best programs that they put out in quite a few years. The only problem, and everything is very nice, very well done. The only problem I have against it is they don't mention one single word in here about the council. I'm sure the council people had something to do with something like this in one way or another, and they should have been recognized. Also, these people need to be given a letter of accomplishment. Of course, they deserve it, and it's a very nice program. Okay? With that, I'm still have a problem with assessments. I find it still hard to realize that a house that is within 10 feet or 13 feet of a railroad, there is no decrease in assessments. It doesn't even change the assessment. I find that very difficult. Because I've asked a couple of, or quite a few realtors, what is the most important thing when buying or selling a house? The value of the house. It wasn't price. It was one thing and one thing only. Location, location, location. I had a meeting with the head of the real estate department, and he said, location doesn't count. It's amazing to me. I think it's time to start thinking about getting a new head of the real estate here in Stanton. He worked at, this person worked at Charlottesville. He made a nice salary there, I'm sure. He was asked to leave. He got a bonus. He left and went to Albemarle. He was asked to leave there after five years. I'm sure he got a bonus. Why? Why would Stanton hire this person and pay him more than what he got at either Charlottesville or Albemarle County? I don't understand. Don't understand that at all. Another thing, and I've said this over and over again, the way the assessments have been done are out of order. $200,000 or more houses, know a lot of them increased, no increase in assessments. 200,000 or more houses decreases in assessments of 20, 30, 40%. Why? Houses in the area of 50,000 to 100,000 increase in assessments of 26%. Why? Those people who are, had their assessments increased by 26% are only making 20 or so, $15 an hour. They can't afford all of these increases. So much for that. I never get any reaction from you people. I don't know why, but I never get any reaction. I feel like I'm talking to stone statues, unfortunately, but I don't think you're that. Another thing, there are people who are trying, who are going to try to be elected to this council. The good people have left. Why? I don't know, but there are reasons why, I'm sure. There's a lot of animosity here in this council. It shouldn't be. They were, and there should never be a four to three vote on council. It should be the majority, yes, but it shouldn't be three to four. Well, like I said, there's room for compromising before things are settled with a three to four vote. Well, I don't have much time, and it takes me a while to think about what I have to say, unfortunately.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kessiger, does anyone have their hands raised?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Caller, you may begin.
This is Jack, this is Jack Kerrelason. I live at 241 Thorn Rose Avenue in Stanton. And since I'm enjoined by council rules, I'm singling out a council member by name. I want to make it clear that I'm referring to the property at 239 Thorn Rose Avenue. The city has a very easy to use property, property database, if anyone wanted more detail. In August 2021, the owner of 239 Thorn Rose Avenue applied to vacate a portion of a shared alley between homes on Thorn Rose and those on Lancaster Avenue. I was advised by the city planning office that if an affected resident, such as I were to object, it was virtually guaranteed his request would be denied. The alley in question has long been in common use, including outlets at either end, and bore no markings as private. I attended the planning commission meeting and raised my only concern, which was that if the outlet at the end of the alley were to be closed off, it would become impassable to delivery or emergency vehicles. The lack of an outlet would make it extremely difficult, if not impossible, for heavy equipment or emergency vehicles to exit the alley, and their sizes would make you turns impossible. So relying on this property owner's public and private promises that this outlet would not be closed off to residents, several neighbors chose not to object, and I and one other resident actually spoke as good neighbors in support of his request. One member of the planning commission, in casting his vote, quote, "very strongly recommended the property owner grant a permanent easement to residents along the Vapty Alley to prevent the potential." the property owner grant a permanent easement to residents along the Vapty Alley to prevent the potential access problem. Without objections from residents, in September, this council unanimously approved the recommendation. Residents heard nothing more after that. More than six months later, after the owner had erected a psychologically interesting multi-story building, which is now known locally as the Garage Mahal, the outlet was suddenly closed off by a heavy gauge steel padlock chain and carpeted with threatening signage. There seems to be a 60-day time limit for a citizen to contest a ruling such as this. It seems to be the city's opinion that an individual making public promises is not entering into a formal contract and thus not legally bound to honor them. So it is most interesting to me that the owner of 239 Thorn Rose Avenue produced his padlock chain long after that time limit expired. And after his own heavy delivery vehicles had utilized both ends of our shared alley. So if a faithless neighbor wants to override his promises, it appears all he has to do is wait 61 days and he has carte blanche to do whatever he wants. At the very least, I strongly urge council to consider legislation to ensure that property owners would have reasonable time for recourse against faithless promises made by neighbors when they seek favors from the city. I reckon if the particular property owner at 239 Thorn Rose Avenue wished to honor his public and private promises, he could always provide keys to his padlock to his neighbors who share the alley and who granted him the favor of supporting his original request in the mistaken belief that he would honor his promises. And at the very least, all residents could be made aware of the trustworthiness of their neighbors, whether or not they hold city office. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to? Hi, welcome.
Good late, good late night. I just rise to, um, my name is Moonine Jackson Amis. And, uh, even though I don't, I live in Stanton currently, I am a Stantonian. My birthright, I never give up. And, um, I was here, of course, to celebrate my, um, high school reunion, which you gave a very lovely, uh, accommodation to us. But I wanted to thank you for accepting all of my, uh, vetters and concerns and my writing and to in person, uh, thank you for what you did with the Wildcats, which was very exciting. I don't know if any of you were able to attend, but it was a very wonderful occasion. And, um, so I just, you know, sometimes you need to have the face connected to the correspondence and the desires and the wills that, yeah, you express to writing. So that's, um, I thank you for that and you will be hearing from me more and more because I do participate, you know, in what's going on in my hometown. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right, anyone else in the audience? Well, with that.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have one.
Okay. All right, caller, you may begin.
Hi, good evening. This is Yvonne Wilson at 2017 First Street. Not going to take up much of your time, but I wanted to say that I was very, very happy to see that the Reed Brothers did get the keys to the city. They have put Stanton on the map and we definitely need more of that. I'm all about the arts and I'm all about the music festivals, the more the merrier. And Stanton definitely does deserve, uh, the accolade that they did receive being one of the most beautiful places to live in, in the state of Virginia. I'd love to take it even higher and have it be one of the most beautiful places to live in the United States. And even though I did not live in Stanton, I knew about the Statler Brothers before I even knew here. So I just wanted to thank the mayor and council for recognizing their cultural contribution that adds to the flavor that is Stanton. Y'all have a good night.
All right, thank you. Uh, one last chance, anyone from the audience? All right, with that, the Stanton City Council Regular Meeting of September 8th, 2022 is now adjourned.